I don't think the mayor and Mr. Fountain's going to be able to make it. Obviously, they wanted to come up with more than welcome to. This is a work session to go over a few items. You'll notice that the agenda set for you, there are five items for discussion. Obviously, the work session, we would not be making any decisions this evening, other than, at a staff level, we wanted to bring this up to the elected's attention, so that prior to Monday's meeting, if there was additional information needed or requested or thought about that staff did not provide it, it would give the opportunity for that to hopefully be accomplished between now and Monday, for decisions to then be made. The remaining of the agenda is just an FYI of items that Lisa utilizes for the composition of the Monday agenda. There's no anticipation of discussing those items, just merely to remind you all of what at least staff has identified as moving forward on the regular. So, with that, you'll notice that there is an item relative to deep patching on paving. You recall that you all authorized staff to move forward with the paving project that's going out and about in town. And as things happen, when you're dealing with some subsurface issues, specifically paving or earthwork or other things, the contractor got out and started milling some of the properties or some of the roadways, identified certain areas that, in their professional opinion, it would be better served while they're mobilized and out there to do some cuts and to do some deep patching. Lonnie is here this evening to kind of answer some questions I may not know, but specifically, the biggest one is NOAA Drive. They've done some markings on the road, so between now and Monday, if you'd like to go out and take a look at the markings, they're pretty obvious that if you were to just overlay it with asphalt, I think the integrity of that would probably be compromised and you'd probably start seeing some pavement failure if you just merely did an overlay. So, the deep cutting would essentially, deep patching would allow for a little more work than just milling the asphalt and overlay, and it would allow them to cut out some of the sections. Put in, most likely, I said six inch, but in talking to the contractor about two hours ago, we're probably looking at about four, four and a half inch on NOAA. And then there's about three other identified places, Bill Wiggington, Bryant Street Summit, that may have some. So, be mindful of cost. The cost could be anywhere from 150 a ton, and it looks like NOAA in and of itself may be in excess of 250, more like 260 tons. So, that would indicate about 39,000, 40,000 worth of work to remedy those sections along NOAA. The remainers would probably be about 15 cumulatively. So, Monday evening, staff would be asking for you all to authorize a change order to go not to exceed 60,000. And if we get any additional information from the contractor, we'll share it with you all, and if y'all take a look and it provokes some questions, we'd love to be able to get those. And if you want to say anything, Lonnie, I would ask.
Whatever the questions I have.
And this is a recommendation. It's not a requirement. The contractor was the apparent bid. Staff is comfortable with it only because we've used them in the past. They've done a good job. And admittedly, they just said, "Look, we don't want to do something for y'all," and then six months to a year, it's heavily traveled and it's going to start being compromised.
And this is, excuse me, this is the same company that in the last bid package, we done Main Street. This company did that, and they were the company that ended up paving all of Stega all down the Mary, all four lanes, at no extra cost because they was figuring something and they figured it different. And so, they shot straight with us in the past, and I feel like they're trying to shoot. If you go over and look at the road, I mean, you know you have to get out of the car, you can see, but if you get out and go out in the road, there is a large problem there.
And we do, based on SLOPS proceeds, we did talk with Lisa, and we are comfortable with any additional expenditure y'all submit. So, in terms of Monday, if there's something specific you want to see, the contract was a little over 1.2, I think the original bid. So, rather than us typically what we would do in the future, once we get buy-in, is we would probably say not to exceed, you know, X amount over and beyond. We are having them go elsewhere, so as to not incur this cost without y'all's approval Monday. So, they're going somewhere else tomorrow and Monday, and then get word from us. So. So, we'll throw that on Monday, and any other stuff, we'll share. The next one is similar, however, is different in so much as Lisa, David and I have had some pretty significant conversations amongst ourselves, as well as with our engineer. And we've still got some work to do. However, you may recall back in June, we got authorization to let a, or do a little bid to a firm, precise contractors, to do nearly 106,000 dollar job on the water tower at the forestry. We went through pre-con, we did, you know, just some continued work. They began, I think, on-site, probably two weeks ago or so, mid-August. And they did what is called a, I guess, a rub test. I have not delved too deeply into it, other than the current paint on the tank has good adhesion, it sticks to the tank good. That was confirmed before the bid and after the bid. However, when they went to go do the rub test to see how the new stuff is going to hold on, they basically said it gummed up and became soft and is considered dead. Now, we'll disclose to you all, staff's position is, we're not dealing with subsurface issues. We're dealing with something that you can touch and feel. We've expressed that, pretty straightforward with the engineer, they've communicated that with the contractor, as well as the paint supplier. Our expectation is that we're not in a position to ask you all for any additional funds. However, understanding that we don't want to incur the cost of them doing something without a primer, and then it failing, and then we get into the issue, we've asked them to give us a more favorable cost estimate of what it would take to go back to the less expensive paint. Because if you recall, there's about a $20,000 difference between the 15-year versus the five-year. Obviously, they've incurred the cost of the paint, whether we make them absorb the full cost, or whatever restocking fees. Right now, they've given us an estimate of 6,700 savings, which we found unacceptable. Without getting into a lot of heated fights and discussions, staff is asked to see the contract, to get legal's opinion on if we so choose to try to remove ourselves from that contract. We would have some costs to absorb with mobilization, even they've done thus far. My preference, and I'll be more than happy to let David and Lisa chime in, my preference is for them to get us in the 80-something thousand range of doing the five-year paint. We do need to paint it, we've already identified the monies, and we already have a contract left, so they can do the work. I don't expect 6,700 savings, I'd much rather see something between the original and this. David, Lisa?
All right.
Okay.
So, Brandon, you know, I've talked about this, and I'm starting to go into focus, but did they come out and look at our tank when they gave us the bid?
Yes, they, I let him in the gate. And he done some kind of test then.
Did they do the rub test, or did, or did they do it?
He done it adhere, how it would adhere to the tank, but I don't reckon he done the rub test. The paint manufacturer themselves come out and said they done the rub test and said they would not warranty it.
Okay.
And what I was advised was, in the state of Georgia, now, I did not source this, I would have just taken it, it was advised that there has been no incident like this before. That has occurred in other states in the north, but it has never occurred in Georgia. And now that it has, that they will put this into a practice of checking the adhesion, as well as the solvent rub test. So, moving forward, even on any additional tanks, that would be something that would be required, but up until something happens like this, during their due diligence, they're just going to check on it. So.
And the original was 15-year?
Correct.
And now you're wanting, you're wanting to get for 80,000 on five-year?
It's going to be probably mid-80s. I think their original quote was about 20,000 less than the 99, so it was probably about a 79,000 for the five-year. And so, what I'm looking at is ideally, if we can meet in the middle somewhere, recognizing that our ultimate goal is for a freshly painted tank along 515 with the other two water towers. But, providing y'all options on Monday, we'll look at the add in the primer, to where then the adhesion for the 15-year would be viable, that's about 18,000 cost addition. Any reduction that they're comfortable with, I kind of rejected the 6,700 idea, but if that's all they got by Monday, that's what we'll present. Or the third option, what, in terms of foregoing the work and just paying some sort of incentives.
For the other higher bids, was it for this same paint?
Yeah, well, we had three bids, or four bids for the high paint, and then four bids for the low paint, five-year paint. But it's the five-year paint that's on there now, and it's lasted over 15 years, so it's no...
Just a little smudgy when you put turpentine on it.
Yeah.
Whatever.
But it's held up good, I mean, it's still all look terrible, I mean, even as long as it's been over there. But remember, we all agreed, we wanted to paint the 515 tank because of, you know, the aesthetics of the other two being, you know, and that been like a, going to be like a rustic can if we didn't do something. So, yeah. I agree with Brandon 100%, though, they need to come off more than 6,700, I mean, 10, 12, 15,000 or something, and then...
Is there anything that y'all like for us to explore between now and Monday that we've not already identified as presenting y'all with some options to select? This has provided us with a little bit of an issue, we've had to remind ourselves at the staff level, of what we're hoping to achieve is to get this quarter. We're not pleased, and I don't, I'll leave it at that.
Is this the company that we've used before? Different?
Yeah, we, they got good, you know, references.
Right.
We had never, we've never used them before. But, I feel like them leaving and having to pay that fee is going to line up costs more. So, if we can negotiate this cheaper paint, I think we'll be better. And achieving, like Brandon said, getting it painted, and just saying, "Okay, next time, we'll know better." Could be.
The other tank on 518 South?
Expensive paint.
Liberty.
Expensive.
15-year?
Yeah. And the one on the north at Appalachian Circle is the 15-year paint. And that's where we got the ideal. We were like, hey, those look so great, we'd like for this one to look like, that one's never looked that good. But, I mean, it's going to cost us 18,000 more to have that.
And that is an option that we'll still, the staff, provide you all with Monday, and as you journey out and look and think, direct us accordingly. So. The third item is, again, just wanting to get some direction on what the mayor may not be missing in regards to benefits discussions. Obviously, I'll be taking the lead on discussing it tonight. If there's a preference for, Matt Bidwell with MSI to be in attendance, Lisa, Stella and I spoke with him a couple of weeks back. We got our health insurance renewal. We were extremely pleased with what the renewal came in at, in so much as we felt as though that was a pretty attractive offer. However, you'll see the spreadsheet we composed was, we took their information, compiled it in to look at if the city takes a 3% increase and then spreads it to the employees, that is 3% increase, you'll see that there is a modest increase to the employees. The cost savings to the city is identified as well. I don't want to just go through line by line, but if there's anything that stands out, the very bottom of the spreadsheet kind of summarizes my thoughts.
Is this a one-year bill this time?
Yes, sir. And after we got this, I think it was $2,400, Lisa, the dental came in at about $2,400, but I had already, so that's not really an increase, that I've just kind of just said that's not. I had to get Stella and Lisa to look at this over, to make sure I didn't do any mishaps, but... And I guess for purposes of persons who may not have the spreadsheet, I can say that if the city were to want to just absorb the increase, numerically, it's about a $32,000 increase, and it would come out to about 3.45% versus about a 2.95% increase that if the city absorbed their portion, the savings would be about 4,000, 5,000. That would then be on the employees to absorb. So, you'll see the bottom two columns kind of identifies that.
So, when we did this plan, can y'all help me remember what, we absorbed quite a bit of it, but we also charged them $5 more a period, or something like that?
It's $5 a week.
$5 a week.
I think they're still taking that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, this is... The very bottom is the employee currently cumulatively annually pays 159,436. The renewal, if we were to spread it across, it would be about 164,164 to employee administratively for payroll and finance. I'm not sure if, if you're asking staff, I'm not sure if it would benefit our, for the city to save 4, 5 grand by having to redo some of the stuff, just... But, I wanted to provide y'all with that, see if y'all wanted something different to look at, or at Matt here. Are y'all comfortable with Matt not being here Monday?
We need a decision on Monday?
Yes, sir. So, we'll need to let GMA know before the end of September, to then allow them to get all the... Basically, the good thing about open enrollment, if nothing changes, would, it would just be them coming out and just enrolling someone who may not be, or dropping, or just reeducating what the plan is. But you have to do some sort of open enrollment by the way.
Well, Lisa, we kept, we were guaranteed for two years the same.
Well, it was a, a year and a half, why didn't we?
We changed our date.
Yeah, we changed our date.
I think it was two years, and that started in April, but we changed our dates, and now it's January.
Which is way great, because now we know what interest is going to be for the budget.
Right. And we didn't know that before.
Yeah, we were always budgeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
And along lines of GMA benefits, staff had kind of looked at earlier in the year, and then just settled some things, as it relates to the final benefit plan of the city, or essentially what would be referred to as retirement. However, GMA did notify us via email in July, that they would require the cities throughout the state to restate their plans. So, I told Lisa and Stella that I had asked GMA to give us a little time, because earlier in the year, we had a consultant along with GMA look at what the plan would look like if we modified it moving forward. And I wanted to have an opportunity to kind of put some things on paper, and then have the opportunity to ask the collective body if there's any receptiveness to modifying the plan, or restating the plan, meaning we take our existing plan and just say, "We're going to keep it for right now," and we would go through two readings of an ordinance and send it back to GMA before the end of the year. If there's a desire to modify, and this is for Monday, we would then ask GMA to reflect the modifications in the plan document. That would then be submitted back to the city for consideration of a reading and second reading, because it's in ordinance format, to then be presented as the new plan moving forward of existing employees, any employees thereafter. It doesn't do anything for current retirees. And the effect financially is an increase with any modification. The impact, based upon what we were advised in the spring and what I confirmed, is because of the way it falls within the year, and the way they analyze the cities and give us our numbers, it would not be, we looked at until next year, and the bill would be in 2021. However, I'm a proponent of at least identifying ways to begin thinking about budgeting for it, whether it's for the full year, one quarter, two quarters, three quarters, whatever we may seem to be able to do. I know y'all are reading some of it, I will summarize the current plan, as well as what actions may or may not be taken, as well as the proposed plan. And the current plan is essentially what's considered the old GMA retirement plan. It's your 65-years-old, and you retire, there's essentially a 1.25 multiplier, meaning that you take your years of service with that organization, you multiply it by the 1.25, you divide it by the calendar year in months, 12 months, and there's your monthly adjusted benefit. That plan is currently funded at around 98.89%. That changes periodically for all intents and purposes. That's like saying your mortgage is paid off, that's a bad example, but you're still continuing to make annual payments, but you're, you have no real liability if everybody were to just retire and close up, which, again, is not a feasible idea anyway, it's just how they do it. The cost of the city is around 137,000 annually is contributed, that is no cost to the city employee. Once again, this is a pretty well-stated plan, that the way GMA works is they'll take a, they have a master plan document, 15200 pages, and they'll, they'll take it, take components of it, inform you, a 40-page document, which we have, which has been here to find benefit plan or retirement. There is an addendum to this current plan, that if restated, you all could deem to no longer be applicable, and you don't restate it with the addendum. It has no effect on anything except moving forward. Same way with the proposed plan. If you're looking at wanting to modify, the experience that I have comes from another GMA community, where we took a similar plan that had the GMA 65, 1.25 calculation, pretty basic and simplistic, straightforward, not simplistic. We did what's commonly referred to as the rule of age. What that is, is your age and years of service, minimum age 55. Of course, where I came from, we did minimum age 52. I'm on it at 55, because theoretically, under any plan, there's always the normal retirement age NRA of 65, or early retirement age 55. So, to be somewhat consistent with industry standards, 55's a good number to achieve. The calculation, the multiplier, I would be asking to increase from 125 to 15. The idea behind that is to be competitive as an organization with other municipalities. As a city manager, it's my job to ensure that we continue to create an environment that can attract workers. That is something that people are looking at more and more, is salary, but also benefits. And what, what's, what can I expect? That plan would immediately be funded at about 79%. So, there is a reduction in your paid off, so your liability increases from nearly... So there is a reduction in your paid off. So your liability increases from nearly, you know, zero to about nine hundred some thousand. Excuse me. The idea is the contributions annually made keeps it at that same percentage. The recommendation that GMA provides helps you maintain that percentage. Eighty percent does not alarm me as much. I feel more comfortable in the ninety percent range and that could be achieved with infusion of one-time caches or several increases over the years to catch up. It doesn't concern me as much because I'm not funded at fifty percent. So once again, as an organization, as a city, you do have an expectation that you can continue to be around. We've been chartered since, believe, eighteen fifty-seven, so that is where I take the leap. I'm going to be around. The cost of the city will increase. You'll see, if you go through all of the documentation, there is an actual spreadsheet. I tried to be consistent with the health insurance to try to simplify as best I can. For my benefit as well, communicating this information. The cost is about one hundred and twenty-three thousand more annually to the city on top of the one thirty-seven. The idea that I have as a good practice would be that we are increasing the benefit to the employee. So therefore, I would propose having the employee contribute one percent towards their retirement. Similarly to the health insurance, it is a benefit, therefore, there is a cost associated with it. I don't think it's unreasonable. However, I have not vetted this throughout the entire city staff. I wanted to approach you all.
What, so what?
Of their salary, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Additionally, you'll notice in the spreadsheet that I've included a military service. That does not apply towards their vesting in terms of they would still need to be in the organization ten years before they're able to receive a benefit. But the military is, once again, just a nicety in this incremental cost that allows them to utilize a certain percentage of their years of service in the military to be counted towards their calculation.
So it's not one for one?
Yes, sir. It's, well, I don't dependively know that.
No.
I don't, I'm sorry.
We currently have any employees that serve?
I believe we have.
We have a few, we don't have one.
Less, less than ten. I know it's less than ten. It's maybe six or seven. So that's, that's the idea behind that because then moving forward, if in public safety or if in any, any act of office or, or if someone served the country, what would happen is they would be available to, say, your five years can goes towards. And based upon the way calculations are run, that's why GMA spec'd that out at about a three thousand dollar a year of impact. I am requesting, proposing to remove the in-service component. The current plan, once again, the, the way that plans were written is if you retired, you met, you reached the age of sixty-five and you retired, the in-service component of our plan allows you to come back to work the next day and continue to earn a salary. Now, as a, as a manager in concert with the finance director of budgets, what you're in essence doing is you're continuing to pay the employee their salary as well as the money that we're contributing into the retirement plan. So the idea is to remove that in-service from it, to say, well, when you get ready to retire from that organization, you may do so, and then if you want to work somewhere else, you can. If you want to work that, with that, is all you can. You just would suspend essentially the retirement benefit. And then that's how that works. So it doesn't necessarily exclude you from having to just leave when you're eligible.
Right.
Just, just the whole double dipping in the same organization.
That's a best practice.
Yes, sir. That, GMA, that was one that in the spring, and then when I asked them to give us some time to approach this with y'all, they asked, is that a consideration? And I said that it is for me and I'll communicate it accordingly. And they said, it is very rare that communities are doing that still, as well as.
What school system does that play? Do you know?
Yeah, I don't think they do.
And, and I would increase the minimum hours of work for eligibility to go from twenty to thirty. So in order to be eligible for the plan, you'd have to work a minimum of thirty hours a week.
Aren't they considered full-time at thirty?
What?
Regular employees.
Regular employees. What, what we do is the thirty is tied, Stella told me she gets tied to some other benchmark that we use for something, and I can give that if you like, or twenty. Once again, when you're going through, when you're going through things, you, you find certain things that jump out at you. And that was one that typically people think of a forty hour week.
We have a summary of the, of the changes that you're.
It's in the memo.
Okay.
Proceeding to the plan documents.
Got you.
And part of the reason I included a letter is when I said we were asked in July, the IRS, the way I have to explain it to myself is the IRS twenty eighteen reviewed GMA's retirement pool. And it's a non-taxable pool. They signed off on it and in return, this is the master document, in turn, they require every single community to then restate their plan. Because we had a meet earlier in the year and we had thought about, I wasn't necessarily in a position to go through it. I said, well, if I've got to bring it up, I at least want to present options. And, but it has to either be restated, if not restated, and you can always look at it in the future. Modify when we need to get into something. You'll notice the document said August thirty-first. That's when they want it, but I didn't have them commit by the end of the year because we have to do two readings of the ordinance based on our charter.
So Brandon, I don't know if you, you know, I've had this conversation, but coming from people up outside, we led the nation in hospitals our size and employee satisfaction. So this is something that's very dear to my heart. It took us a long time to get there. And so I, I do want to let you know that I am a strong supporter of doing things that benefit our employees. There is a lot of talk. I guess this is as good a time as any, any other time to talk about this, about wages versus benefits like this. And I, I don't really have a, I don't have a real good feel for where we really are on all that. I certainly think it's interesting and I'm intrigued and.
And, and in that regard, I will say when Stella, Lisa and I met with the GMA reps and they gave us some numbers and you'll see in the, the letter dated from Seagull, I was in May. The hesitation on my part was because there is an increase to the city, even with an employee contribution. However, I'm not a financial person per se, but the ninety to a hundred thousand impact is less than doing an across-the-board salary adjustment for eighty-five employees. And that's kind of what I was trying to still present, an idea for a benefit, all the while knowing that this is not something that we necessarily have budgeted for. Admittedly, Lisa and I haven't the agenda to give you all an update. We're not fully prepared yet to discuss details, but I can't tell you with a lot of confidence that I would put this in immediately, but because we are given kind of a, a year before the impact twenty twenty-one is something to at least consider. So.
And I, I have to say, I think people are looking more at benefits. I know everybody looks at salary, of course, but I, I think more and more people are going to look at benefits as well as just salary. So.
I think this is going to be a tough budget here for us. I think to the mayor's credit, it's kept things extremely tight for a long time. And this transition is going to be tight, tough, I honestly think it is, for us to achieve what, some of the things that we want to achieve, we're not going to be able to do it all at once. But it may come to a point where we do want to do a substantial amount of it this year or next year just to move forward a little bit, even if that meant either some, looking at our assets to see if there's any opportunity there. And then, of course, we have our reserve, which we have built back up and unfortunately had to dip into it this year. But those are just going to be tough, quite tough questions we're going to have this year and.
And, and, and just to, to get back to us, the rationale that I, I thought of too was if, if we identify a salary adjustment as a viable option, because I have not presented that to you all, it is something we could work on, we're in the budget, we could look at, sort of things. That would become an immediate. And so I would still, you know, depending on how this conversation goes Monday, I would want to at least look at, would we be able to increase from a three percent to a four percent to offset the one percent contribution? Or if we did that for, for a six-month period, just to get people, because I, I am a proponent of a cool skin in the game. And so albeit it may not be as much, I'm an advocate for, you know, making it attractive for employees. But all the while, when you're doing a benefit, you do need to have some hype.
What's exciting about this for me is we're, we're talking about investing in our employees. And that too makes this city and it makes it run. And so all of this is about quality. And I'm excited that we're actually discussing this. We're looking at all the options available because there are multiple ways to skip ahead.
How often can we make these decisions? Like, we decide not to do it now, then six months from now or three months from now or?
Yes, sir. And, and, and part of the reason why I asked after the meeting with Stella and Lisa and the reps, we just kind of, we got an email July tenth, I called, I said, hey, can you give me some time? Put some stuff together, get this to y'all. I wanted August, but I didn't get it until now. And so it can be looked at if y'all, we had this discussion Monday and has decided to just restate the plan. It can be looked at the next quarter, second quarter, at any point in time. The idea is from a budgetary standpoint, after you're past a certain point from an eval in terms of, I think it's in the spring, Lisa, where you kind of, at that moment, you've locked in your rates. So anything we do thereafter.
Whatever you did.
Implementation will be tough. Yeah.
You can still do it. And so then, and you could implement it, let's say, January of twenty twenty-one. If you did it next year, and then maybe the budget here is twenty twenty-two. So your budget here is still, you can time it a year and a half.
So if we, if we went with this particular thing, second one, we'll, like I said, employees have some skin in the game. And if we could budget part of the money for this year, because you said it wouldn't be due until twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-one. What would happen is it would take effect January of twenty twenty. If, if we said we'll budget for half a year or we'll begin the employee contribution half a year with the city employee. Because basically what happens is the bill comes due, the budget of twenty twenty may not hold, but you put that in reserve in your budget for twenty twenty-one. You budgeted, you put it, or coupled with twenty twenty to help give you a start. So the idea would be, I would still want to put some money in twenty twenty period.
Right, yeah.
As kind of a reserve or offset for the full burden on twenty twenty-one. And then as time goes on, you can continue to put some in and/or pay down that overall liability to get it closer to the, the ninety percent, which is good.
The county just went to this, right? Eighty-eighty thing. Are they going to it on retirement?
I'm not sure.
I think they are, and I don't know if it was across the board or whether it was just public safety. And I don't know if they did the one percent contribution or not either.
Which, which admittedly, I will tell y'all, I have some experience with significant pushback in my little organization. You go from paying nothing to something, it's not pleasant. So.
And we got it from the insurance.
I'm fully, I'm fully prepared to say, I support it because the percentage is proportionate to salary. It's not a flat amount.
Right.
So one percent, a percentage is.
It's a penny on every dollar.
So it's, it's.
It's a long-term benefit.
Four times.
Yeah. Sorry.
Is that taxed? Do you know?
That's, I can, I can find that out.
Would it reduce your tax?
Well, in a, a normal retirement plan, like 401K, I don't, it was not taxed. I've been in those, but this I would think it would be treated the same way.
I would think so.
So you'd go from being taxed.
I don't think they pay tax on it until they draw.
They pull it out, yeah. They definitely pull it out.
Yeah, the pool, the pool that you're paying into is, but in terms of your, your paycheck.
Do you have your paycheck dollar, you, you're given a penny, so you're only getting taxed on ninety-nine cents?
I can, I can find that out.
I put that, it's a little penny, not a, okay.
But if, if there's anything between now and Monday that has not been identified in the memo or the background information, please, please let me know. I've kind of.
So y'all are looking at the budget process now, kind of getting radios.
Lisa and I began talking with departments. They submitted their budgets to Lisa and Finance. Her and I have met with practically everybody as of today, with the exception of, of, you know, a couple of budgets. So.
So the impact for this year's budget basically is whatever we decide, plus, plus the one percent on the employees, whatever we decide.
The twenty nineteen budget, there's no effect.
When we get ready to do.
The twenty twenty.
Yeah, the one, the one we're getting ready to do is.
The twenty twenty is where you have the ability to yes or no, because the bill's not due until twenty twenty-one.
But we could put some aside to start the process. Yeah.
Sorry. With that, I will transition into item four. Cost of construction aid. Cost of construction aid. This is a committee, but I did want to give an update because it was pretty, it's a pretty extensive update that warranted, I think, it being a work session item in case I needed to get some more information for the regular meeting for any decisions that may need to happen. Councilmember Fountain and I, along with Tony, have been communicating about this. He hasn't seen the final numbers, albeit I just got those in the last day or so. Lisa, David and I have spent some time with the engineer who did an analysis of the 515 corridor from Harmony down to the proposed development. So if you look at kind of a two-track method, which is kind of what this was, it was a review of the cost of construction for that development, but in order to make sure that as that corridor grows, what is the impact? And ultimately, the direction I've kind of been going down is, how do we as a city become whole, all the while incentivizing development and preparing for any additional development? So the effect, I did not make copies, I apologize, but I will have this in the packet now that I have it. There's about five hundred acres that they looked at, the whole area. The development that spurred this discussion was about thirty-one acres. The cost of construction aid that we have in place is thirty-five hundred per unit. The development was approved for up to a hundred and eighty units, which is in excess of six hundred thousand dollars. Because I did not necessarily know if that was viable or not, it started the process of the overall review. And it revealed, from turnip seed, our engineers that have grown the system, I guess, from whenever to where we are today, stated that there would be nearly four million worth of improvements needed. That is if everything in the five hundred acres built out in accordance to some commercial or residential zoning. So then going into the five lift stations that are impacted through that corridor, A through E, that's about two-point-four million worth of improvements to three of the five that this project would impact. But because this project is only about thirty-seven thousand gallons per day, you can't say that the full impact is the two-point-four million.
So many of these dollars, are they connected to our plans for expansion?
Yes, sir. What they looked at is saying, yeah, I apologize. What they're saying is, if the city of Jasper wants to provide sewer service to this development, the cost involved in infrastructure, the pipe, and the impact of lift stations already in existence are kind of accounted for.
But nothing relative to our, the planned update of our system?
The facility itself.
This is all additional stuff?
Yes, sir. This is just for that corridor. Yes, sir. Which, so the impact of the thirty-acre development would be approximately two-hundred thousand dollars to the lift stations. Then to put pipe in the ground with another lift station, and this is where I'm going to ask David to come on up and chime in, there's an estimation that the engineer has gone out and looked at other projects of scale and/or construction, if we bid this out, and that scenario is eight-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. Now, that's the sewer. There are some additional costs associated that they've included. However, David and I have spoken, you could shave off a significant amount by doing your own labor or some in-kind labor through developer, which is once again something that you do as a community. It's not as if we just take this out to bid and just release control over it. We would want, since it's going to be part of our system, we would want to do as much as we can do because ultimately, we're going to be responsible for maintaining it. That cost is probably around the six-hundred to seven-hundred for sewer and water. David, Lonnie and I have looked at, if you connect an eight-inch line at the old gas station that's currently there, and run it down 515, that would be probably a hundred, a hundred-and-fifty. So if you take five hundred to six hundred.
That's where the line is now?
Dunstina. Dunstina, yeah, that's the, okay. So if you take that, ten-inch, you're basically looking at a hundred, a hundred-and-quarter, a hundred-and-fifty. And the material itself is less than a hundred, but if we had to rent equipment or produce something, I'm adding some extra cost for us. And I say the water line because it would be a fairly straightforward. The sewer would admittedly require the pump station, they expect at about two-eighty. We had used the one-fifty number in the past because I think that's probably a more, I guess, comparable to what we've experienced. Now, for full disclosure, when yesterday Lisa, David and I had a conversation with the engineer, they were pretty well forthright that these numbers are the numbers and they're standing by them. My experience is, if we're partnering with developer to incentivize a particular product, then I think it's a good sign to say, we'll partner in some sort of cost-sharing agreement to make this happen because the benefit long-term has the potential of spurring or incentivizing others. That we would then discretionarily, as an economic development tool, come before the council and say, we have this analysis. We now know the impact to the five lift stations in this corridor, the acreage, the gallons per day for commercial versus residential. So we can calculate with a little greater ease the impact. And we have sunk cost with the water line because if the ten acres or so adjacent to this develops out, we now have an existing water line. I don't have all the answers on this. What did I miss, David?
No, we're looking still, the developer proposed three-hundred thousand dollars to go forward for the cost of construction aid and just pay upfront and allow us, you know, to use that money for that. And they've offered to do all the grumping, which is getting it ready for the water and the trees.
Good third.
Yeah. So they can, it'd be a whole lot easier to lay the line, the water and sewer line. And one, they've got to get, two, you blame Lonnie that all of that's been annexed. Good blaming, they put you down.
All of it has a tribute, a tribute to the line.
From Dunstina to this property has all been annexed.
South.
South, yes.
There's still some north of that.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, 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 there's still some north.
But from Dunn's, south, yes.
But the council has pretty much said, you know, we accept 515, and y'all have already spent probably five million dollars on 515. If you take the tanks, lift stations, sewer line, water line, this just takes you on further south. And, I mean, I don't feel like we've lost any money on any of the other projects that y'all have approved. And I don't think we would on this one either. Because you're looking, they still have to buy their water meters and sewer taps too. So you're looking at another four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars there. Just because they do the cost from construction aid, that's just to help to get it there. They still got to buy their water meters and sewer taps too, so.
And then for sure, showing the developer.
Yeah, they're going to do all of that. So that's just us getting it to the lift station. They got to tie on the lift station. And us putting a main there at their property line, and they tie it in and go along. So we're not doing anything. Everything we're doing is making the city, as our new mayor has said, whole. Because none of the, we're doing, are we doing it just for them? It's passing other properties that's going to benefit even the people on the other side of the road because you're going to be able to loop. Eventually, you'll be able to loop those lines at the end and you'll have water coming on both sides, which was our previous mayor's vision years ago. There's already two ten-inches going down both sides already. So you just carry that on to the end. And, I mean, personally, I think it makes sense. I was sort of on the other side of it, Brandon, you talked me into this side of it. And I see that it, because it's going to make the city prosper.
So it's the current, the current, what we currently charge is thirty-five hundred per?
Per residential unit beyond a three-unit development.
And what would the total in that be?
About six-twenty or six-thirty.
And they say they can't make that work.
Yeah, yeah. What they say.
Yeah.
And now we're talking three hundred?
Six-thirty.
And grumping, which is about a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, with the grumbling box and the big track over and such, I mean, you're a hundred thousand dollars, there's no way you can get around it. I mean, they might be able to go save that on some equipment, but we don't.
Now, we're not proposing we do this on every job, every time. Is that?
What I would propose to do is when, my experience has led me to believe that when you have a project that's significant impact to your community, whether it's residential or commercial, that you can identify that as a value through conversations like this, to say that it's a viable project, it's got a benefit to the community. This conversation began before it was rezoned, but to put things in perspective, I wanted the buy-in of the elected in the community that they wanted the zoning in place, which was because the product they're proposing is the single-family detached along the corridor. So once that was identified as a priority, then I said, let's turn the conversation to, how can we partner or make ourselves whole, all the while incentivizing? So I would, the practice I use is presenting you all with this type of information on projects of significant size. Because when you're dealing with millions, that's significant and it does have a positive impact on our system. We do have existing capacity at the sewer plant already. And so the additional meters of use will benefit us. And what I used to do is at times, we would, as a business, a business component for your governmental functions, a business component, you would look at the payback. So whatever monies you put forward as just an outright incentive, you would look at the two, three, five-year payback of say, well, at year five, we're essentially going to break even. And then in perpetuity, you're essentially collecting monies that are then paying down on the system.
Probably taxed.
And probably taxed, so. And splotched and lost and other ways to enhance your community. I'll keep it somewhat the same on Monday. However, I did want, for the benefit of this group and/or whenever to advise me if there's something additional you want to see, I will communicate with the party who've been interested that this matter will be discussed on Monday and kind of at least what we've kind of walked through the process.
I do, not necessarily by Monday or tonight, but I do want to have some conversation around the people on Village Project relative to the same kind of argument that makes it all make sense.
And I can find out any information, dollars or percents or anything about that?
Well, we just talk about it and see where, have some questions really that are not, no decisions involved, information.
All right. Didn't have any supplemental information other than this is a new budget process for me as a city manager. There is an existing way of doing things, however, being respectful of that, but all of all, trying to merge some of what I like to do. I've asked Lisa this week, her and I, the departments have sat down. Some were five or ten minutes, or a little longer. And then others like David was an entire ordeal. It was like twenty-four hours.
Always.
Complete and mental exhaustion. No, it's good because it gives us an opportunity to go through several things that we've needed to discuss and make us feel comfortable as staff that we have to be accountable and to then take direction. So Lisa, I don't know, if we wanted to talk a little bit about the budget, what we had planned for Monday. I don't want to monopolize everything. Do you want to say, or do we just kind of, I haven't?
I'm not really ready to talk about details of the budget.
Well, what we had looked at was asking for them to identify what millage they wanted to advertise.
We do need to advertise the millage rate the two weeks before the next council meeting. So I need to get an approval to advertise. I think, I'm waiting on the tax digest still. And Darren's been out the last couple of days. That's what I'm, I need that really bad, so I hope I get it before Monday. But I did get the inflationary growth from the tax assessor's office and we had almost a six-point-three-million-dollar growth. So I think in order not to have a tax increase, we're probably going to have to lower, roll back the millage rate just a bit. This growth at our current millage rate is only eleven-thousand-seven-hundred dollars. I don't know if you want to have a tax increase for that amount or roll it back, but that's something you can decide.
And I was going to confirm, I think you can, and it's not always the most pleasant experience. I will tell you that I'm not a proponent, I've articulated that before, of rolling back necessarily. Albeit, the modest growth that we did have is nearly no growth in terms of an overall digest, ten, eleven, twelve thousand. May not necessitate going through the truce and taxation hearings. That is something to consider. However, there is the option that you can always advertise a millage rate that has not rolled back, it's your current, or you can even advertise at a higher rate. That may seem counterintuitive, but what that allows you to do is as you're going through the budget process to evaluate what half a mill or one mill or three-quarters or one-quarter, what that would garner, when we give some additional information on the tax digest, the overall amount. And then when you go to adopt the millage, you can always adopt it at the current or below. But if you set it roll back or at whatever amount you advertise, that's what you are required to do. Because the truth and taxation hearings is it will be presented in the advertisement as a tax increase. One of the things that I've done as a staff person is communicate it to the public that if the elected body does not want to increase the millage, that the idea is there is no increase to the millage rate. Albeit, if your property was assessed as a higher value, praised at a higher value than the previous year. It will cause the result for your taxes to increase. That's the truth in taxation.
But it's not due to millage.
But the millage rate, if it is not adjusted, you say that the millage rate has not been adjusted. It's the market has dictated that that property has been praised at a higher value than the market rate. And therefore, that causes your taxes to increase, but the millage did not increase. That's, we, when the new laws came out, the truce of taxation, it does cause a lot of confusion. But the idea behind it is. If your property was appraised higher, yours was not, it was the same or even lower. You may not have any increase. You may, or you will. And therefore, the public hearing process enables us to communicate that. Kind of ahead of the bills. So Monday, I think what we'll do is we'll, if you have some information. We either, you know, roll back to what the, the amount is that doesn't require the truth of taxation. Maintain the certain same millage rate regardless, and then you just go through the truth of taxation and say you didn't. Adjust the millage, or I think you can always advertise higher. And then as you go through the public hearing process, because I think it's three public hearings. I think there's two before council and one before administration. Or at least my experience is that's what you do. I'll just see some clarification.
So when will the budget process be concluded, basically?
We'll have our budget hearings and know them. And, and it'll be adopted the first meeting.
Decent, okay. But when will y'all have the budget, kind of to a point where?
We're having our committee meetings in October, so towards the end of October, we'll all have something to send out to everybody to be looking at.
Lisa, this figure for that new subdivision, if it goes in, be about eighty seven thousand dollars a year in proper tax, we'll see. Once it's built up?
Yes. So, like I said, I wanted to have the work session just to find out if there was something that we had inadvertently left off. Obviously, because of the mobilized campaign paving, we need to give them direction after Monday. Health insurance, we have to get them something before the end of the month, as well as the defined benefits, give them direction. I think the profit owner of the five fifteen project was wanting to close with the builder. And so they wanted Lisa to have an idea or expectation of what. What the city's position was on that, and the budget was merely an opportunity for us to say that. Monday, we just need to get some direction on the millage rate, how to advertise in the paper.
Got some questions?
Yes, sir.
Splosh, you and I had a very brief conversation this week about your history as, that other entities would advocate for that. I don't think that's necessarily our local history as much as I would like to work today. And so I would like at least some conversation on, since it was kind of a hard fought battle. I feel a little naval agenda, just going to let it either die or die. Something like council's input on, is there a strategy? Do we engage? The chamber has in the past advocated for certain things. I know they did it East Bloss. I know one of the state bills on education, they were against, but if it's inappropriate that we even talk about it. Or strategize on it, then let's not, but.
I would, I would take the cautious position. I'm not an attorney, but I would take the cautious position of, as an election item. Not to speak in terms of advocacy or not. If there's factual information relative to the project list that the city would be proposing on the ballot. Along with any numbers tied to that particular, that can be.